Council order, please call the roll.
Kus.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Gage.
There.
Isom.
Here.
Seaberton.
Here.
Hyfer.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Communications, we have, notice that we have a new museum director and an update on the planning and design of court improvements. And that brings us to persons to be heard. Joel, start us off.
Good evening, Joel Jackson, one side to side, Martin Buddey. I'm here to speak to new business item A1. On behalf of Gateway Akila, I will just wait until that ends and if you have questions or need to hear from you, let me know, okay?
You betcha. Sit right there in the front seat.
Thank you.
All right, Bud, are you here?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Kenyon, AKA Arthur, 628 Adams Street. I've been a resident of Ketchikan for 46 years. Prior to that, I was with the US Coast Guard and married a third-generation girl from here and we now have grandchildren here. I'm here tonight to address the use of the Criff Building. I'm against the use as a sobriety house. I think that the place has way more security, it's way overbuilt for, I feel something, for something like that. I'm retired from KPU and also from the last ferry system. And working for KPU, I've had opportunity to be in the building and there is very tight security up there. I feel that building is way overbuilt for a use for a sobriety house. I currently have a son in API, or yes, API right now, and there's no facilities here in Ketchikan for situations like he's got. At the hospital, they don't have this facilities up there to take care of somebody that can get out of control with a mental illness. So he ends up going to the jail, what have you. Up there, he's on display in a bubble and they have to keep him in that bubble, I understand, for observation. And he's also being observed by all the other inmates up there. And when these guys are not on medication, they do some bizarre things. It's just humiliating for them to, they don't underst, these inmates, I don't think, understand what these guys are going through. And I just think that they either have to go from Ketch, from here, there's no facilities, so they either go to Bartlett or API. And it seems like he's on a three-month cycle, that he's back and forth all the time. And I don't think I'm speaking just for myself, for my son. I think there's a large number of community members that have issues. And I just think this facility is way overbuilt and would be better suited for something like this, okay?
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Next, is it Paul Hook?
Good evening. My name is Paul Hook, 2729 Tongis Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of myself to encourage this body to get a sober facility in town. Maybe that can start to heal the damage done to our community when Carhouse was closed down and we lost our detox. We have no place for people to go if they are need-breathed at night, except for to sleep out under the stars. And so I'm here to support a sober living facility here in Ketchikan.
Thank you very much. That was the final person on the list to speak. Is there anybody else that did not sign up but would like to address the council tonight? Come on up.
Molly.
Welcome, Molly.
Seventeen thirty-one Ferry Chasm. And turning that into a detox center in my estimate like shooting mice with a shotgun.
Molly, who do you work for?
I work down here for myself.
Oh, okay.
I come here for the people out of the place to sleep it off.
Well, I spent some time there too, and it's a shame that we threw the baby out with the bathwater in, in Carhouse there. When we made the deal, I can understand why the city wanted to get the red ink out of that Carhouse situation and making the deal with Akila House. Now, even when that was under the city, Carhouse was marginal, but at least we had two detox beds. We didn't have a nurse or anyone on staff and we were running 12-hour shifts. If you want somebody to mess up, boy, there's a good way to do it. Anyway, and then when someone did go into, you know, needed medical attention, we needed to call 911 and get them transported by emergency ambulance a block, not even a block, from door to door to the emergency entrance. In the hospital, we had an agreement with the hospital, who we, as a city of Ketchikan, support that building and everything, and, and they weren't, they weren't going to send anybody over unless they were manageable. I, I had the privilege of checking someone in one night with a .35. And I also had the great privilege of having to call that 911 number one night for some other person. Was marginal at best, but now, since Akila took over, we lost those detox beds. What happened to them? Why can't we continue? Why can't we have just a couple of beds, three beds, whatever? We don't need that large facility and that's not what, what it's all about. What you need in Ketchikan is housing, affordable housing, and jobs. So that people, and, and I heard before that, maybe tonight, somebody said something, accountability at the, with those state dollars and everything, and I, and I said, for a lousy $30,000 from the state, the state, the city, and the borough could have saved millions for that lousy $30,000. TLC isn't longer here. One of our past residents, I was told, costs the city and the borough and whatever, and emergency services and round and round and round and getting picked up a million dollars. Well, of course, those are inflated dollars, that's what they want you to believe. My son went to the emergency room and got a stitch in his thumb. He didn't have insurance. $940. Oh, sure, you know, if you believe that, I got this bridge at Brooklyn that's for sale. But what I'm trying to say is, it's not a matter of throwing money at this situation. You can throw all the money you want in the world, I didn't build this, revamp that thing and do all this stuff. And they're not going to complain, they're getting the money, they're, they're getting the dollars. But how much good is it going to do? How much good is it going to do? I'm happy to say that there's an experiment going on with the Salvation Army that is turning out quite well and, and it'll, you know, and that's it. But if we could find something a little less extravagant and a little less restrictive than the Criff Center, that's why people are out there in the first place. And what, what we do it as a society, and I said this before the council meeting, if you want a junkyard dog, you beat him and kick him, you know? So don't be surprised when you treat these people that way that you get bit, that when you send the police over there, they get combative. Don't be surprised if, you know, it is, and all they really want is some dignity, you know? They don't really prefer to be that way. They'd like a, if the city could find some jobs, paint them benches down there or do something, and invite someplace where they can get affordable housing in Ketchikan. Affordable housing. Right? I sound like a bash in Akila House and I'm really not, because they are doing, they are getting people out into the community, getting them jobs and providing affordable housing where after they go through the program, they're giving them a hand up. And that's what these people need, you know, they, you know, they just need a hand up. But that Criff Center, that's, yeah, you could spend a billion dollars on it, but I think we've got budget problems at the state right now. I'd look twice at that.
Thanks, Molly. Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. Lisa Pearson, 316 Parnell Street. I'm here representing the Ketchikan Public Library and I'm here to invite all of you and the members of the public to a very special presentation we're having tomorrow evening at 6:30. Sabra Simmons, who was born and raised here in Ketchikan, has just returned from Afghanistan and she's going to be giving a presentation about her experiences over there. She graduated from Georgetown University and she has a master's degree from King's College London School of War Studies. And so she spent a couple of years in Afghanistan, working for various organizations, including a stint as a spokesperson for the Afghan Minister of Agriculture. And she's got a bunch of really amazing photos and videos of what it's actually like over there, going shopping, cooking meals, driving around town, things like that. So it's, it's a really unique opportunity. We're also going to be connecting live via Skype with Lieutenant Colonel Koshal Sadat over in Kabul. And there's a 15 and a half hour time difference, so it's going to be 6:30 at night, our time, it'll be 8 o'clock in the morning for him. And Colonel Sadat was commissioned from the Royal Military Academy Sandhurst and he has served in a variety of command and leadership positions within the Afghan government, including commanding the country's elite counter-narcotics task force, the counterterrorism unit, and Kabul's crisis response team. He's served as a senior advisor to Afghanistan's Special Operations Team, the Ministry of Interior, and the National Directorate of Security. He was also the liaison between the Afghan Army and General Stanley McChrystal and General David Petraeus. So this is a completely unique opportunity for our community to listen to and ask questions of two individuals with a great deal of experience and expertise in a region of the world that is very important. General, Colonel Sadat will be talking more about the geopolitics of Afghanistan and Ms. Simmons will be talking more about her experiences as an Alaskan in, in that region. So again, I'd just like to extend an invitation to everybody listening and watching to come tomorrow at 6:30 PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can anybody else want to address the council? See, and then we'll move on into the agenda. Now, that brings us down to consent agenda. I'd like to add unfinished business A1 and new business B1, the KPU one, if there's no objection. See, and then we do that. I hate that. Welcome back.
Yeah, I was looking, anyway, you said 7A1 you're going to add to consent. Is that what you said?
6A1.
Oh, 6A1.
And 7B1.
7B1, okay, I got you.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to consent?
For moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Madam Cloak, can you read the items?
Approval of minutes of the special city council meeting of November 7, 2016, and the regular city council meeting of November 10, 2016. Resolution number 162647, extending the city of Ketchikan slash Ketchikan Gateway Borough Cooperative Relations Committee for an additional two-year term to November 1, 2018, exempting the procurement of the annual records management system and computer-aided dispatch software licensing and maintenance support from Hubert Associates Incorporated for the Police Department from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code seven, or 5B1, exempting the procurement of AMR-style electric meters from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with Cooper Power Systems, exempting the procurement of pole-mounted breakers from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. Ordinance number 161834 and number 161833, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code sections 3.12.050 and 3.12.035 respectively, relating to bidding and/or quotation requirements as related to local purchases, second reading, and the budget transfer for change order number one to contract number 1602, Bailey Diesel Generator Number Three Asbestos Abatement with Far North Services LLC.
Thank you. Any questions on any of the items before we call the roll? Call the roll, please.
Flora?
Yes.
Hyfer?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
All right, that passes 7 to nothing. That brings us 7A1, resolution 162648 urging Department of Health and Social Service to approval of Akila Gateway Center for Human Service Application for Sobering Center Services. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm with the city council, approve resolution number 162648 urging Department of Health and Social Service approval of the Akila Gateway Center of Human Service Application for Sobering Center Services and establish effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob, do you want to start it?
Yeah, I see the resolution here and I understand some of the requests in regards to moving forward with this. And I guess, Joel, my first question is...
Joel, can you come up?
In a grant like this, if you don't have available properties and you were dealing in this in another area, doesn't, doesn't there put in something for rents or leases? Why, why do we have to take the piece of property and, I guess, give it over for nothing? Just a question.
I, I, our experience, my experience is, at least with this particular grant, I sat in the pre-grant proposal meeting and listened in on the conference and without exception, every potential applicant was utilizing an existing facility or adding a service on. Certainly, people could build it into a service proposal, like a level 3.5, which is one of the options. Unfortunately, because of Medicaid rules, we're, we're not allowed to operate, ideally, that's what we'd like to do, is expand treatment, but we can't add more beds in this community because of our housing location. It's located within a mile and there's a, it would have to be in another community. And if we go above that 15 beds, then we can't go Medicaid. So, and, and to be, to be fair, our speaker said the building is, is not appropriate potentially for that use. In some sense, that's true. It is a jail. To remodel it for another purpose beyond a sobering center would be extremely expensive, which was one of the reasons we didn't propose for one of those alternatives from the original RFP. We would have to make limited modifications to the building as it is for the purposes of this grant.
Lou, I have...
Go ahead.
Well, I was kind of wondering the same thing when I read through it, but I thought that maybe you were going to use a rent in lieu, like an in-kind donation for leverage for the grant.
And that's, in fact, what we've done with the grants in, in Ketchikan, is we, we will use the property in lieu of, for matching, if you will, from the agency for the grant proposal. So it leverages that, even though some of the dollar amount is based on whatever you pay per square foot rent.
Right, because that could be substantial and you would have to remodel anyway and there would still be a rent, there would still be a value to having that.
Yeah, and in our understanding, the building doesn't have locks, the security system's been removed, it does not have a kitchen, so you can't use it, you would have to remodel the kitchen completely if you're going to use it for 24-hour occupied, like a treatment center. But it can be used as it is, as a sobering center, because it's not a 24-hour occupancy and it's a slip-off, basically. I haven't told her it's zoned appropriately and it's already adjacent to the hospital.
So after three years, you're asking for the title. Can the council decide that? I mean, we don't have to do that at this moment in the process, do we?
Yes.
Yes.
So my understanding is what the city manager put in front of the council is that that is not a part of this.
It isn't.
That's correct. We're recommending that that determination be made at the end of the three-year period and that Akila can make the property stand alone without the state grant assistance.
If I might...
Yeah.
I think it's important for folks to know that there's been a large group of people, including the Superior Court, the Police Department, the hospital, Salvation Army, KIC, Department of Corrections, all meeting every month for probably eight years. In the past five years, since I've been part of that group, we talked about primarily mental health emergency issues, but what comes up consistently is this issue of how do we take care of those folks in our communities that are, that are need-breathed? And, and so we've been thinking about this for some time. In a given year, it costs the hospital about $465,000 to take care of people who are guilty of being need-breathed, right? And the cops then have to, at least have to pick them up. And sometimes when they pick them up, they've been bludgeoned and they end up going to the jail. So, you know, they're not guilty of anything except necessarily being drunk or under the intoxication of something else. I think that a lot of different events have led up to this point. The DJJ could no longer provide that service in Ketchikan. So we have a facility that's zoned correctly that's available. And we had a grant proposal that came out second November, allowing us to ask for money to help provide a service that meets or fits into our continuum of care. This is really unusual, I want to make that point. I don't think there's very many places in the state right now where people have the opportunity to get funding for a service they need and have a facility that they can use to do that. And gosh, the facility is right by the hospital. And so I think there are so many reasons that this is a good idea, aside from the fact that you're going to take pressure off the Police Department and the Fire Department. The DOC has had problems with inmates coming in, being drunk, and having folks die, so they don't want to deal with these folks. The hospital is not equipped to deal with someone who's, you know, fighting, angry, and they're intoxicated. So we think that this is a reasonable alternative. And to be honest, the reason I think that this came before the council a few months ago, is the borough simply had an issue with people downtown hecking out and the council then took that on and formed a committee. And, and one of the things that came out of that committee was, we need to find a way to, to house these folks. So there is an unintended consequence of having less pressure on businesses and property owners downtown and throughout the community. I can't imagine how it feels to have somebody on my property who I have to call the cops because they're drunk. I mean, I would feel horrible about that. And if it happened all the time, it would make me feel that really bad. But that's what some people are faced with right now. And this would allow those folks to have a place to be.
Dick had a question.
Yeah, I guess the proposal to me doesn't, doesn't bother me too much because it makes use of a building, but I got a couple of questions. One is for Carl, do we have any other proposals at all? Is the only one? Okay, then the other one refers to something the mayor referred to, and that's the title. I'm not comfortable in giving the title out without a reversionary clause in it. I guess that'd be a decision the council would make at the time of the decision, but the, too big, it's too valuable, the building did this giveaway from the city's standpoint. And the third comment I've got is, it's not very clear in this, I guess, lease document in section 12, and it talks about repairs maintenance and major maintenance. I don't want to be on hook for nothing. And it's not clear what I'm on hook for, so somebody needs to explain it to me.
Carl?
Councilman Kus, the lease agreement you have in front of you was modeled after the lease agreement that we used to transfer the Gateway properties to Akila. Under the lease, as it's drafted, I think anything in excess of $2,000, we would be on hook for the city because we own the building. If the council wants to change those terms, that's council discretion and we can, you know, rewrite the lease accordingly. Whether Akila will be willing to accept that, I would have to defer to Mr. Jackson, but it certainly can be drafted any way the council wants to draft it.
Well, I don't think that I'd be voting for this if it's written the way it's drafted. I don't want, I don't want to be on hook for anything over $2,000.
Anybody else?
I agree with Dick. I don't...
What number are we looking at? They take care of everything?
Say again, Lou.
Oh, I just wonder what, do you guys want to negotiate this where they take care of all maintenance or are we looking at a different number, 5,000, 10,000?
Personally, I don't want a number in there.
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but I don't want a number in there. We, we cannot afford it. I don't, I think that building's probably in pretty good repair, so it probably doesn't make any difference, but that's another question for Carl, is there anything there that looks potential?
There are two issues that we are addressing right now. Mr. Jackson is correct, the state did take the locks and the locking system when they vacated the property. We're putting in replacement locks on the exterior doors as we speak. And we're also moving ahead with replacement of the fuel tank for the building. It's in pretty bad shape and we didn't want to wait to, to address that, so we're moving ahead to, to replace that. Those are the only two.
How's the furnace?
As far as I know, it's, it's fine. We did a walkthrough with the state before they vacated and the only two issues that were brought to my attention were the locks and the fuel tank.
So if the building would be in reasonable condition, if Akila acquired use of it, then I agree with Dick. I think going forward, they should consider being responsible for the upkeep for a building that they're getting for zero cost.
Right.
Anybody else?
So, until such time it was transferred, but if it was transferred, it wouldn't go back on the tax rolls, correct?
Correct. Akila is a not-for-profit, it would be exempt from taxation.
All right, go ahead, Joel.
May your honor, so we have a building on Washington Street that was rebuilt with the cooperation of the city, Peace Health, and Akila, Akila put $700,000 in it, the city put $300,000 in, Peace Health put a $100,000 plus the building. And that, that particular building has a 15-year clause in it where at the end of 15 years, if it would revert back to, revert to Akila, if any time before that, at least they use the building for other than its intended purpose, it could... it could revert back to the hospital. And so we're, Akela is, would be okay with making sure that the community's interest is protected, you know, if something changes.
Your honor?
Yes, fine.
So, so really though, this is all contingent on the grant. If the grant didn't go through, Akela wouldn't be interested in moving forward with anything.
You are correct.
You know, I, I see here there's a lot of commitment that they request out of the city. And, and I don't see that we have any purpose for the building right now repurposing it. It's something that we could look at to see if there's any department that's in the need or something like that. And I understand that there's a problem, how much recidivism are we going to have from individuals rolling through something like that? Are we going to put $3 million in a facility to treat, I guess, you know, a recidivism problem that we're probably not really going to correct? Because this is just, this isn't treatment, this is just a sleep-off center.
So we're not treating it as just a sleep-off center. So when folks come in, they're going to be assessed and we're going to at least attempt to engage them in treatment, to meet with the case manager when they're woken up or sobered up, if you will. I think that the community benefits, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the average ER visit's about $2,700 in state Alaska. You multiply that times the number of people that come in the ER, present for the ER with an alcohol primary, as a primary diagnosis. And you start seeing significant amounts of money. I came up with this $465,000. So community benefits by, by saving money in other places and taking pressure off the systems that exist. And to be, to be, to be honest, this is housing, for housing. These are, these are my neighbors, these are people, some of them people I went to school with. These are, these are not on the abstract. In the summer, they'll be working out of town, but right now, they're, they're our neighbors.
I have one other question. Mr. Ken, Ken, you mentioned the mental health issue. Do you guys deal with that issue too in the way of trying to find spots or make it so they don't have to be sent north?
I was nodding my head as he was speaking because everything he said is absolutely true. And so yes, it is difficult at times to find appropriate placement, in particular with kids. As an example, if somebody presents in the ER as an adult, you know, you may spend three or four hours on that particular client. If it's a child, you can anticipate spending a day because of just the complexity of kids. And that goes the same for, for kids that have substance problems.
There's no facilities in there, anything that we can?
I mean, the fact is, if, I mean conceivably with sobering center, if somebody's having a problem with a child who's using or an adult is abusing, they could bring them there if that's a safe place. It's, it's hard, when somebody gets released from a hospital, when they're drunk, they reach a certain point where they're safely, they can come to the sobering center and stay there. And so it keeps them hopefully connected to the services that are available. And will allow us to develop a relationship, and not just us, but KIC, other agencies in town. So we want to be a good partner with everybody.
Your honor?
Yes, fine.
So this place is a little bit off the beaten path in the fact that it's further up the hill than the hospital is, closer to our grade schools and, and other schools in the area. Is there a plan so that when these people are traversing back and forth that we don't create another problem?
We, we believe with monitoring the building, the exterior of the building, because there was an existing system, we actually parked our cars close enough to their building so we knew that they were being monitored to keep them safe. And so we would be doing that. And obviously if they're sleeping it off, they should be leaving the building not intoxicated. Right now, they're leaving the hospital, which is about 180 feet ER away from that building down the creek. So it's, it's a little bit closer to the school, but I don't know that it makes it more or less safe for your kids. Except they may have to climb to the woods to get to the schools.
Your honor?
Kelly?
Just to add, I work at Gateway, I work for Akela. And we already have a lot of the homeless that actually camp out behind the building. They, those trees in the woods around that area have become a safe haven. And some of the people that seek services, if they don't have a place to stay, that's where they're sleeping sometimes.
Now Carl, if we approve this tonight, does that seal the three-year lease or can we still? We're committing to entering to the lease, but is it the lease that you have here or can that be still worked on after we find out they have?
If you want to give me direction to change any terms and conditions in this document, we certainly can do that.
But if we approve this, this keeps it going forward?
If, yeah.
Anything else before we call the roll?
So what is the timetable on this particular grant?
So the grant, the state says they're going to award it on around the first of January. They do not expect there to be people being served until the first of the fiscal year for them, which is July 1. There's a fair amount of, they have $150,000 available to make the building appropriate for this use. So to some people's concerns about the building, we will have funds available to furnish it and to make repairs as needed. We think probably the limiting factor of having folks in the building is more revolves around having, hiring EMTs or above and getting them trained appropriately. So my hope would be as of April, is when we be operating.
And how many staff would you anticipate?
Probably six, totally. And then we would use portions of staff that we already have within Gateway Akela to help serve those folks. But, and these are, by the way, these are not $12 an hour staff. These are EMTs, which I'm sure if you're familiar with the salary scales, at Ketchikan, you know, they're $28 to $34 an hour physicians.
Anybody have any more questions for Joe? Dick?
No.
Thanks, Joe. Dick?
I just want to make sure that what we're doing tonight, if we, I don't, if we move the motion forward, that means we support them asking for a grant. But like I said, I won't support the lease as written because I think we're taking on too much responsibility on the maintenance.
Mr. Carl? If the resolution is passed and Akela does in fact get the grant funding, we can bring back a rewritten lease to deal with the various issues that we raised tonight and that can come back in formal approval to the council. But I think what Akela is looking at, at least in support of their grant application, is a statement of our intent to go ahead and lease the facility and I think that's what I'm hearing tonight.
Correct. Anything else before we vote?
Yes.
Bob?
So explain to me how the provision for transportation. This is only for those calls that the Police Department are called to and we interact with inebriants or people that need to maybe go to that particular facility. This isn't a situation where we get a call to go pick somebody up just for transport purposes.
I'm going to defer to both Chief Bendard and Chief Hoag to come up and tell the council how their departments interact and how we think that would translate into a relationship that Akela equipped.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Alan Bendard, Chief of Police.
I have my hope, Fire Chief.
From the Police Department's perspective, that, this hardly could happen, someone could call, concerned over someone being need-breathing. We respond with the meat criteria, we'd be more happy transporting them.
And as far as we're concerned, the, the main thing we would have to work out is working with our medical director to ensure that we're meeting the legal requirements before we would transport someone to a location other than the hospital. We have to be careful that we're evaluating them and following the right procedure. But we would also not be opposed to transporting them to a location to get them to safety so that we're not called back again later. It would save us some time with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Kelly?
So I just want to make sure, because I do work for Akela, my program is separate. I just want to make sure that I'm not going to get in trouble.
I'm not going to.
So I'm not getting any extras on.
Important. All right, ready to call the roll? Call the roll.
Kus?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isam?
Yes.
Seabertson?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Hey, that passed a seven to nothing, that brings us down to 7-8-2 of authorized development of the Tongas historical museum permanent exhibit. Do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
Subject to availability of funding in 217 General Government Operating Capital Budget, I move City Council authorize Museum Department staff to proceed with the development of a new permanent exhibit for the Tongas historical museum as detailed in the acting museum director and the city manager's report dated November 1st and November 16, 2016.
Moved in seconded. Bob, do you want to add anything?
Well, if we're going to have a museum, we probably need to have a permanent exhibit.
Something that people will look at.
I'm all excited to see it. Anybody else have anything? Dick?
Yeah, I, I guess the question I have is the word proceed before we get the new budget. Does that mean that there is money that kind of, that we now have or it's coming from somewhere to proceed to do something before the budget is pursued?
Pursued funding.
Subject of a, subject of a.
We're looking for.
So it, it, it's not really going to take, nothing's going to happen until next fiscal year?
Nothing that will require funding, that's for sure.
Okay.
Just planned.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I just.
You bet, Jill.
I saw it, last year we all saw it in the budget and it was mentioned in the budget that it didn't include the, the this. And so it wasn't a surprise. And from what I read, it's coming out, most of it's coming out of the Commercial Passenger Vessel Fund.
That's part of the proposal, that's correct.
Because it benefits, right?
Right, and then the rest from the Community Facility Development Fund. So I just want to say I, I am going to vote for it because I knew that's the way it would be last year when we voted on the museum renovations, we knew it wasn't going to include the.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, call the roll.
Seabertson?
Yes.
Isam?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. And it brings us down to 7-8-3 clean treatment and repair of Chief Johnson Totem Pole.
Subject to the availability of funding, in the 2017 General Government Operating Capital Budget, I move the City Council authorize Museum Department staff to proceed with planning and undertaking cleaning, treatment and repair, sorry, planning for and undertaking cleaning, treatment and repair of the Chief Johnson Totem Pole as detailed in the acting museum director and city manager's reports dated November 14th and 16th, 2016.
I'll second.
Moved in seconded. Dave, you want to add anything?
I just, I, I actually had a quick, a quick question for staff on this one. In, in, in looking through this, because it's happening right next to my business. I was, yes, so it's going to be from, it's, the pole's going to be down from January through, through next December?
That's a good question. Anita Maxwell, Senior Curator Programs and Acting Museum Director for only six more weeks now. Part of the, part of why we're coming to you early with this is there's so many pieces and parts. It's a 55-foot pole, we can't quite confirm exactly how it's attached. So there's, there's a lot of mysteries and we'd love to solve as many of those mysteries as possible. Like I said, it's 55 feet, we don't have a facility currently that can house that. So there might need to be, much like when Carver Israel Shotbridge was building it, there was a small shed-like thing built to house it while he was carving, carving this replica. Finding that spot, finding someone that has the capability to take it down. All of this with, you know, honoring, honoring the pole, honoring the Tongas tribe. Lots of things to, to figure out there and so that's why we'd like to get ahead of the game and figure out all of those pieces and parts before we go out and do an RFP to find a carver who'd be able to do the work that's appropriate for it. How's that for a non-answer?
So, so it may not be coming down anytime soon.
I would.
Probably not in January.
I would love to see it come down as soon as possible, just so that we can start to take care of it. So that, I mean, it is such a cultural icon of this community that I'd love for as many visitors as possible to be able to enjoy it as soon as possible.
Yeah, the beak needs to get back on there. It does look like we're not paying attention to it.
Absolutely.
And as an honorary member of the Tongas tribe, I really encourage us to support this.
It's complicated.
Well, it's, the, the report mentions that it's complicated, but the city doesn't actually own the pole.
Correct.
So is there any benefit to the city and the Tongas tribe to, by simplifying this and having them own it in its entirety, including care of the pole?
Basically, the, the city has already established the precedence of care and maintenance of it. And, and so following that lead and, and looking for that expertise, the tribe has usually looked to the city to be able to facilitate that, whether it was through public works or, or through the museum department.
Anybody else, Kelly?
Are, are they planning on rebuilding the new pole or fixing the original?
Just clean and repair. For instance, the raven, the lower raven figure is missing a beak. The attachments are the issues, you can imagine, in our environment. So we'd really want to make sure that the wings, the kajuk figure on the top.
Right.
And then there would need to be repairs made on that raven. So it's clean and repair. This also, just to be clear, most likely would not be, this isn't a full restoration. This isn't a full, clean, new, shiny, this is just basically maintenance.
Julia, Bob?
I wondered if the Tongas tribe is also going to put in something, the city's going to put in some and the Tongas tribe is going to put in some?
They are not in the financial position currently to do that.
They're landless. And Bob?
So is there any other monies out there in regards to native artifacts and the restoration or care of them that we can apply for in the form of grants?
There very well might be, a lot of those funds have been used elsewhere. And specifically for native arts, a lot of those funds have been redirected to language revitalization efforts. So the, I, I can keep looking, but so far, so far, it's, it's crickets, haven't found anything. We've talked to different opportunities, different foundations, like the Rasmussen Foundation, for instance. And again, a lot of their focus really has been per, talking to tribal councils and that kind of thing, directing those funds to language revitalization, which is, you know, a very near and dear issue.
Anybody else?
So.
Bob then Dick.
That particular pole bolted to a chisel piling that's in the back of it. When we set that pole, we had it pre-drilled and had the plug cuts and everything in it. So those plugs would probably have to be split out in the front and, and then extracted.
Yeah, we were trying to figure out once, basically being able to see what kind of wear and tear had been on those once we're able to take it down to see whether there's going to be additional structure that'll need to be placed to replace any of those or whether they've been, they've lasted this long.
And then we had to take the eagle off the top before we moved it because the potential of damage could fall loose.
Absolutely.
Dick?
Probably a big cost about this, for this is getting it up, getting it down and putting in something. So is there any advantage to doing more restoration while it's down instead of putting it back up, sort of fixed, and then having to do it again? Is there, can you give us, before we jump on this, the cost of doing more work versus just doing a bare minimum and then having to do it again for twice the cost later?
It was definitely a question that all of us raised, if it's down, let's just restore it. I think there's a concern and it really yields a larger question of, totem poles aren't meant to be up for perpetuity. They're meant to age, fall back into the earth and then should the clan want to recommission a new pole, then that is at the opportunity of the clan. And because this particular pole has had a lot of controversy in the past, lawsuits involved, the, the tribe really does not want to at this point go through a full restoration. They, neither do they at this point, were very hesitant to discuss a full restoration, much less a replica as well. So it was very clear to me in our conversations that it was clean and repair.
Bob did generally. I think I missed one.
So.
So, the pole that's standing right now is a replica. The original is still at the totem heritage, so.
Correct.
How does that work?
All right, hold on. Janely and then Mark.
Why don't we just use the rest of the parking lot and build a shelter and fix it right there? I know, it's your parking.
We're having trouble with the current debt.
Mark, you have a question?
Well, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. This is still subject to available funding. When the budget comes.
All right. Any other questions?
Well, even though the people that, I guess, own it don't want to deal with full restoration, they're going to be coming back to us for something someday. And I wonder if they knew what the cost of doing that would be, if they might want to reconsider. But I'm still of the opinion that we should have some type of additional cost if we want to do more as we make a decision and then they can agree or not.
Anybody else before I call the roll? Janely?
The one thing I can say, it is, like, it is our center point of town. It is one spot that people can direct tours to. And a lot of, you get them off the dock and move towards where the cultural pieces are. I think that's important. I miss some of the other totem poles that used to be around town. Those should come back too.
All right, call the roll, please. Kus?
Okay.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seabertson?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Okay, that passes six to one. That brings us down to vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Do we have a motion? Bob?
Yes. We get there. Should be here. I move for approval of vouchers of Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
We did second. Call the roll. Okay. Kiper?
Sure.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seabertson?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
That passes seven to nothing. Brings us managers report. Carl?
I have a few, Mr. Mayor. Just to remind the council, November twenty-eighth, next Monday is your first budget work session here.
Okay.
I laid a report on the table this evening about scheduling a special session to deal with port planning issues relative to Moffett Nichols contract and then looking for confirmation over January twenty-sixth. Would work for the council.
Is that a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
It's a Thursday.
Okay, let's shoot for the twenty-sixth, end of January.
Also, as mentioned earlier tonight, I did lay on the table a memo about, we have hired a museum director, Lee Gray. She will be starting after the first of the year and I think she'll fit in very well with the organization. We also had a memo on the agenda relative to the port and harbor bond issues. I do want to commend finance director Bob Mill for his efforts on that. We saved considerable amounts of money by refinancing the port bonds and Bob put a lot of effort into that, so I thank him. The last thing I had tonight, Mr. Mayor, we also had a memo relative to the two-point coronation facility and issues that council member Seabertson had raised previously. Mr. Klineker is here tonight. If the council has further questions on that, we'll try to respond. That's all I have.
Thank you. Doug, on parking, Dave has just mentioned it, I had another business in the area down there. They're wondering if they could, you know, they see down there the guys working, but they aren't using the whole facility, I mean, that area they blocked off there with the fencing and everything. And they're saying if they could just get two or some more spots down, that would help.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not following where you're talking about.
Oh, at the Sentinel parking lot. They have it all caged off.
We can make that inquiry with Dawson.
Thank you. Can anybody else have any questions on the manager's report? Bob?
Yeah. I just, you know, I went through the memo in regards to the two-point coronation and the two glaring things was the fact that there was some failures from the contractors in submitting plans and delivering pre-engineered building and submitting plans for the coronation product. And the original building, we had considerable amount of problems also. And so how do we keep from repeating these things as we move forward? I'm not so sure that in the sense of a metal building that we shouldn't have some kind of a standard, pre-engineered manufacturer that we deal with, because they do their own engineering. I just don't know how we, how we stop from situations like this. And I know that was a little bit of an extenuating circumstance because we wanted to order the building in time to have it here by the time we get money to start construction. I just, I just don't like it when projects go bad that way. I know that we came in on time and some under budget, but it just, it wasn't an easy transition.
Councilmember Seabertson, you're right, it wasn't an easy project to get, to get done. We did get through it and as I noted in my cover memorandum, a large part of that was the efforts of BAM and working with us to achieve the goal. If the council is looking, would like to look at standardizing on pre-engineered metal buildings for future use, that's something we can look at. And, you know, we've done that with certain fire apparatus and I don't see any reason why we can't standardize on the type of pre-engineered metal buildings that we'd like to use going forward. And if that's something council wants us to look at, we can bring something back.
You know, I think that plays to our benefit and I think we're doing some of the same stuff in the harbors now in regards to ramps and fixtures and all that kind of stuff. And I think that if we go down that path, you know, and utilizing products that we're comfortable with and, you know, contractors or whatever that, you know, work with us well and that kind of stuff, I think that's a good sponsor.
Yeah, ramps are a good example. Anybody else? Manager's report?
Yeah, Andy, I see you're here. Are you still here? Yeah. I see that we're forty-seven point three feet low on upper silvers. What's that mean? Putting that into context.
Good evening. Andy Donato, KPU Electric Manager. I think the number, is that quoted right there? I think the number yesterday morning, Monday morning, was twenty-three and change negative from a ten-year average.
So we're, we're.
And the number maybe in the report is from spill? Okay, so to give you some perspective, that, that particular reservoir has about ninety-nine feet of workable water. Let's call it a hundred, okay? And so the percentage that you gave, so we're.
Half empty. Or half full.
There you go.
Thank you.
Is this kind of a coordinated thing between the use of what we're now drawing out of Swan or we will start refilling again?
Exactly that.
Yeah.
So we were leaning on Swan really heavy these past couple of weeks. We were able to get a lot of inflow in Swan. They completed the project of putting the flashboards up across the spillway. They were able to pick up that reservoir level and, I guess, the flashboards. It got almost as high as seven feet above its spill. And the problem was, is they didn't get a log boom in place in time. And so they had a lot of debris that came through, plugged up the gate, could not break the gate. And so the only way to get that thing cleared out was to bring it back down. So they leaned really hard on Swan generation-wise and then over this weekend, we got it below spill. They now have a crew from BAM in there to clear it out. And so all that time, we've been acquiring water in upper silvers. So hopefully that'll, that'll help. So as of yesterday, again, the number was like we're twenty-three feet and change below our ten-year norm. And not that we ever ran that thing dry, but we may pick up some more rain yet tomorrow.
It won't be rain.
It might freeze.
It may freeze, right? So the issue is when it freezes, that's the end of your inflows, right, until you get the thaw and then it comes back.
Any other questions?
Actually, I have a quick question for Andy. I was kind of amused to read in the Wrangell and Piersburg papers this week, they were very excited that Swan was holding its water and they seemed surprised.
Thank you.
So as always, northern communities remain northern communities.
Thank you, Andy. Any other questions for the manager's report?
I have one for John.
You bet.
John, I'm looking at our water usage report and I see a lot of minuses on there. Is there something going on in our water usage that is abnormal? Things seem to be down.
I'm sorry, I've been taking those hot showers.
Will you stop, stop taking them?
No, this is just a comparison to what the consumption was last year. I have been away and didn't review the report, but I certainly will. Normally, the variances are not really significant except for your major water consumers. Things like your fish processors. As we all know, the season this year was remarkably short, but presently the humpies normally run on a two-year cycle and you'll probably see much more consumption next year.
Yeah, I just noticed that, you know, they're down forty, forty-eight percent in metered waters and totals to the plant, so it's substantially lower than what we've had in the past. And I just, I just didn't understand, I guess. I understood the fish processing because of the seething, but some of these other metered operations are also down considerable amount of, or volume.
Because they have to pay.
Well, they haven't, they haven't had to pay yet by volume, but.
They're practicing.
Anything else?
No.
All right, thanks, Sean. All right, that brings us to city clerk's file.
Nothing, John.
City attorney's report. Future agenda items? Mayor and council comments. Dick?
Well, it's good to be back.
Hey, good to have you.
Except it's colder. While I was gone, several good things happened and several not so good things happened. Disappointed that Bob is still sitting there. But we, I'm glad that Mark is sitting there. And we're going to have a new White House. And you can target me all you want.
All right, Judy?
Welcome back, Dick.
Janely?
How'd it come now? Just got back from the AML. Went to the inebriation, the homeless part and got some really good information. They're supposed to send me more. They actually are planning on coming down to visit communities on the subject since in the state, the increase in homeless individuals statewide has gone up nine percent on both substance abuse and homeless families. And so, and the other thing they're sending me is information on the HUD programs and grants that may come available to communities, so. That, I think it was probably the best one I think I've ended, and I've only ended it.
Very good. Julie?
I also had an opportunity to go up to the conference and there was, there were some good sessions. I went to the homeless session also. I didn't take away from it as much as you did. There was so much information I didn't retain like you did. I went to the legislative lobbyist information session, although I didn't think I needed. I didn't think I needed it at the time, but there was a lot of good information on how to go in and really influence your legislators. And, you know, in Alaska, we all have the opportunity to pick up the phone and call. It's not like a lot of states where you're blocked out of seeing or talking to your legislators. So we can all take a part in it, not just the legislative committee that goes up there. And they talked about how important it was to be in the majority. And a lot of people just at my table were saying, oh, I didn't know that. And people in Ketchikan really don't know how important that is, so that was very interesting. They also had a motivational speaker that took up a lot of the time. He had a couple of sessions. And although I didn't agree with everything he said, he made each of us look at our communities and realize what we have to offer that other communities in Alaska don't and really focus on what we have.
What we can build on.
Yeah, what we can build on, which was really good, so. And that's, oh, and don't forget to go to the Christmas tree lighting this Sunday. Wanted to remind everyone.
Is it really this?
It's after Thanksgiving.
Is that a forest?
Is it going to be over here? Where's it at?
It's a fire station.
Oh, okay, that's over here.
Putting up another tree, yeah.
The topic coming off this one, right?
Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't think so, thank you.
Dave?
You know, when you said inebriation session at AML, I had a whole different experience. I just thought, okay, well, something's had to change. And I do want to apologize, obviously. I'm pretty sure that our family was the reason that the, that the water usage went down because for the last month, we've had our heaters not been working. And so we have to take showers that are about a third of a second long. And we have a teenage boy that tends to take two-hour showers and he was like, oh, it's our fault, but it will improve.
Mark, do you have anything to add?
Just congratulations to KPU for making that power outage recently as short as it was. Not an easy task to get out there and get those lines back up, so I thought they did a great job.
Now we don't worry about the guys out.
Just really get close on Thanksgiving.
All right, the only thing I have is a reminder about the Christmas tree lighting. They always invite the mayors, which is nice. And then don't forget Monday is budget meeting, our first one. And then we have an executive session, well, we have future agenda, oh, executive session. Request for executive session, discussion litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege regarding the recovery from Joseph Burns and Rehabilitation Research Institute of the costs that the city of Ketchikan has incurred as a result of demolition of three forty-seven Bottom Street. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that city council is clear that consistent with the city manager memorandum dated November ninth, two sixteen, it is in the best interest of the city to go into executive session in accordance with KMC two point zero, four point zero two five A three and AS four four point six, two point three one zero C three to discuss litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege regarding the recovery from Joseph Burns and Rehabilitation Research Institute of the costs that the city Ketchikan has incurred as a result of the demolition of three forty-seven Bottom Street.
Do you have a second? Moved in second. Call the roll, please. Kus?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Stay.
Isom?
Yes.
Seabertson?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to nothing. We have one extension. We'll adjourn after this meeting and meet another. Finished in the executive session, we have no motion or action at this time. We gave direction to management. That brings us to.
So moved.
No, no, no. We have an opportunity to do a radio show, I think, on Wednesday. If anybody wants to do that, otherwise. I'll do it.
I suppose.
Oh, you want to do it?
I'll do it.
Oh, okay.
It's Wednesday.
Yeah, he said Wednesday, so I'll double check with him and everything. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everybody. See you on Monday when we can plan budget.
It's Wednesday.